Macy is on vacation. Staycation?
Good.
No, Macy is not here today.
Should we roll?
I think, yeah, if you wanted to go without Jonathan and we can see if Jonathan
It's 7:05.
joins us.
Okay, I call this the order at 7:05 on the July 5th Board of Trustees meeting. Miranda, can you call roll?
Yes. Trustee Corvelan?
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismail?
Here.
Trustee Blake Moore?
Here.
Mayor Potem Mahold?
Here. So we have a quorum and we can begin. And we have a relatively light meeting tonight. Let's go right to the consent agenda. In the warrants, I went through these and I talked with Miranda just before the meeting. There was one in here that had got my attention was road base. And there's a section of Big Springs that was done with this road base.
Yeah, so the Streets Department did a dust control on a section of Big Springs. This road base is $7,000 a mile, which is why all of Big Springs wasn't done. What the Streets Department wanted to do is test it, see how it works. And then their plan is to come before the Board of Trustees as a part of the supplemental budget and ask for additional funds should it hold up to be able to do other dirt roads. But this was kind of our test here using the funds that they had.
Great.
Yeah, see, it's muddier than before, which I have no complaints about. I get a little mud in my garage, but...
Miranda brought up a point, we don't know which is which.
Right, yeah, I was wondering if the muddier area is where the dust control product was put down or if it's where it wasn't put down?
It's a darker color.
Okay.
Runs along the main road, Big Springs to Ponderosa.
Okay.
To Alpine. And it looks like it has a higher percentage of clay in it than the other.
I'll make the note for Emma. You know, we have, we've received a lot of really great comments from the neighbors about appreciation for what was done. And so a lot of it is like, let's see how it holds up. And so that is Emma's intention is if all goes well, he will ask for the additional funding to do the rest of the miles.
Tell your neighbors what it costs. Get feedback.
And what does that compare to on the, it's $7,000 amount?
A mile.
Versus, versus the, what does it typically cost?
So normally, we actually have in budget is for dust control mitigation. And so I'm not sure historically the cost. For some reason, it was a zero line item and it had savings in other areas, which is why he wanted to move forward. But this is the product that most municipalities use and so it's new to us. But I don't know the comparative cost from previous years.
Okay.
I can look it up, though, if that's...
Keep an eye on it.
Yeah, or we'll bring it when we ask for the supplemental budget. We can bring those factor, that, those financial figures.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know what the cost is versus what we typically use.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, I have no issues with what's been put down. If it controls dust, I think that's wonderful.
And also on the consent agenda, 3.2 and 3.3 are the June 14th and 21st meeting, meeting minutes. Did we have anybody have any changes to those? They looked pretty straightforward to me.
I think Trustee Cooms Ismail or Trustee Corvelan had a question about...
Well, we were told by Chris Pelletier, former Public Works manager, that we would be saving roughly in the range of $20,000 in dust mitigation by paving Big Springs up to the point that we did. So that was presented to us as the kind of cost trade-off that we were looking at there. And I assume that it was with an, with an older product.
Yeah, I can say that they haven't done any dust mitigation in a decade. So it, there isn't much to compare to because costs will have changed so much in the last time we really purchased it. I think, at least in Big Springs, they may have put it down somewhere else.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I was just wondering about what the, what the up chart is for dust mitigation.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, we can bring that, we can bring that back. I think that, again, that was really important to Emma and I, that we can show you what this product can do versus being like, can we have the money? And you don't know what the outcome is that you're looking for. So that's why we took the, took the shot at doing this one mile so we can see.
So I also wonder if it will help with the washboard. So far, I don't see any washboard.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that is Emma's understanding that it will have a long-term impact and not just dust. Really, the road will need hopefully minimal maintenance, which is another incentive for this.
Is this that polimer that Pelletier used like four years ago before we did?
It's more of a salt-based. And so I'm not, and I, unfortunately, I couldn't find the invoice before the meeting started exactly what it is, but it is more of a salt-based. Eric, can you hear anybody?
There we go.
No, I cannot hear anybody.
Okay, yeah, no, I can't.
Okay. On the, okay, the direct discharge contract looks pretty straightforward. The electric vehicle roadmap, we're not really committing to much anything on this.
It's just a, it's just a study. And so we've already done a fleet study, just a preliminary fleet study for Public Works, but we'd like to involve the Police Department. It's a great partners and energy program. It doesn't cost us anything. And so I think for us and SAB, we felt like it was really worth it to start to explore EV from, if Netherlands is going to do it, I think the town really needs to commit to being the kind of the front runners in that process.
I agree wholeheartedly. I talked with the mayor of Idaho Springs and they're, they're looking at it very similarly to the way we are in participating in this. Erin, you gonna say something?
Yeah. So I think Rich Orner from SAB would be interested in being on this subcommittee. I recently talked to him, he's an EV owner. And I recently talked to him about charging stations and he has some ideas.
And there's actually in the AIM, a little information about an invite to participate in that kickoff and that's going to be the big part. Right now, the group who's working on it is myself and Erica and we're just getting like the logistics set for that kickoff. But we'd love if the board could come.
Yeah.
SAB, anyone and everyone's welcome to attend that kickoff meeting.
Yeah, Erica and I have talked about it. It's, for EV owners, this could be really something to...
Yeah.
Help. Good. Okay, American Red Cross facility, American Red Cross and BVSD, it looks like those are pretty straightforward. There's no revenue changing hands.
No. And those are renewals, actually. They both lapped, lapsed at some point in time, so we're just getting things back on track. And then you'll see in the AIM, the intention is for town to also enter into an MOU with the schools so that should the communities center be compromised for any reason, we can use them as a emergency location as well.
That makes sense.
So we'll bring that back to the board for adoption at a later time once it's drafted.
Terrific. Okay, there were seven items on the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Can I ask a question in general about consent? So I'm just curious about when something is information, when it's consent, when, when do we need to have BOT approval? When do we need to have mayor signature? All of these, this is great information. It's, it's what I'd like to, you know, I like learning about what's going on. I'm not sure, does the BOT need to approve these sorts of things?
I think that's always been, so Attorney Mattson has recommended that yes, the BOT should approve all these things, but as you see like my, my name's at the bottom. So in essence, you're giving me the authority to sign them. Direct Discharge LLC was an urgent matter, so I worked with Mayor Potem Mahold just to sign that proposal, just so we could get it going. I didn't have the luxury of getting this before you. But there is no administrative authority to sign contracts or agreements without BOT approval, you know, unless it's like related to a project that's already been approved, like a grant, then we may enter into like contracts that are service agreements because you've already approved the grant project.
And then you can sign for the, the town admin can sign for the town with the BOT approval.
And there's also a purchasing agreement. I don't know if all the board members have seen that, but it does provide authority to the town administrator to sign for purchases up to $10,000. There may be certain circumstances where I'll want to bring it forward just because of the situation behind it, but more often than not, we do typically just sign those administratively. And we got the reservation under 10,000, exactly, yes. We couldn't afford more, so. Only if you wanted to, that's your choice, not typically.
I can't hear whatever people are saying, sorry.
Can you hear now, Eric?
Yes, I can hear now, but it sounded like someone asked a question and Miranda answered it, but I couldn't hear it.
So my question was about when something should be on the consent versus an information item?
I got that one.
And when the mayor should sign versus the town admin, when is BOT approval needed? And then, did you hear Miranda's answer?
Yeah, I heard that answer. It just seemed like there was another question after that that I missed.
Mayor Potem Mahold asked if there was public comment with consent and I said only if he wants to.
He doesn't want to.
And he's not going to.
Well, I would like, just to clarify, the direct discharge contract, right now it seems like, like that contract is effective until it is terminated by either party and that termination would require 60 days notice on both sides. And I just wanted to make sure that that is an appropriate amount of time for when, because we do intend on staffing our department, is that correct?
Yeah, so we do plan on staffing our department and as you saw in the AIM, there are staff coming, but none of them are qualified to be ORC. So that's kind of our uphill battle is, in order for someone to be ORC of Netherlands, they have to have wastewater, water collection and distribution certifications. And that's like, those are unicorns, like they don't really exist. And so it's going to take us a little while. So while I think we can scale back the contract over time, because we're not going to need the two to three days a week they're providing, I do anticipate us naming Dave Lewis as our contracted ORC on file for quite a while.
Yep.
Okay, so, so we feel like this is going to be, we're going to be contracting with this company then for, do you have an estimate?
I don't. And so, you know, we haven't had any luck trying to get a utilities manager who has all four certifications. I think my intention is to split it and try to run people down separate tracks and have potentially two to three ORCs, one who's water, one who's wastewater, one who's distributions and collections. It takes three plus years to get all four certifications and that's assuming you're passing every single exam. The person, if you come in green, in order to get all those certifications you need, it's 12 exams that you have to pass. And so it's not going to happen overnight for anyone within our current team. And I'm just hopeful that we'll be able to track down a candidate who at least possesses some of those certifications. But all four, we've been very fortunate to have Chris Pelletier, Nicole Bratzos and Jen Landon, who did in fact have all four, because it's very uncommon. There's about only 20 in the state who have all four licenses.
Wow.
And then, oh, sorry. Could I also ask about this particular issue then? Just because we're approving basically an indefinite contract with, with this LLC and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page when it comes to that, because, you know, on the other, on the other side of things, it seems like it will eventually end up costing us money. Like I know that it says in the AIM that we're saving on salaries because they don't have those positions filled, but my assumption is that we are getting those positions filled, right? So it will eventually cost us $1,000 extra dollars a month. Is that correct to, to assume, Miranda?
Um, yes, yes and no. So the, the cost of this contract is what Jen Landon was being paid. And so what this contract transfers over is what her salary was. So I still have savings to hire operators at an obviously a very different rate. And so assuming that this stays in place, I think the hope was that we would keep Dave Lewis Direct Discharge LLC at this rate, ideally scale it back when we don't need his staff, and then still be able to maintain it under the current salary structure.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, and I just, you know, to clarify, so right now he brings up a team two to three days a week, because I have a gap from Monday through Wednesday. So his team comes and runs numbers and does what they have to do. When, so we have two new hires. Andrew Bliss is joining the utilities team and Brittany Deminsk, who is also a referral from a current employee, they will be with us as of January 19th. Of course, it takes a long time to train, but they'll have some fundamental knowledge about 30 to 60 days in order to work alone. We'll keep on Jimmy Young and Tim Johnson, the part timers, for probably the rest of the year to have that supplemental support. And then they'll phase out and we'll have Chris Caligaris back and we'll be in a better staffing place. So we'll be fully staffed between the five that are there by the end of July.
And so as we phase in our employees, you're saying we will also pay less on this contract?
Then we'll go back to Dave because we won't need his team to come up two to three times a week. And yeah, and I will renegotiate the contract to bring back to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Do any of the new, the employees that you're planning to bring on have a desire to be certified?
They do. So Jimmy Young has four of the certifications we need. He has all the, the entry levels. Chris Caligaris is incredibly eager to get them. So Jimmy and Tim come to us from Black Hawk Central City Sanitation District. They're actually working their off days for Netherlands. So they have the means to, they probably won't become full-time employees with staff, but they'll have enough certs to kind of get us in the right direction.
Okay, so Miranda, of the people that you have coming on stream, there's, you already know you have one person lined up for each certification.
Not necessarily. I think it's a matter of how it falls in line. You know, I think a lot of utilities I'm coming to learn is about passion. Some people are more passionate about water than they are about wastewater. And so really driving into that passion. I want everyone trained in everything, though. So what's happened historically is that we've siloed people and they can't fill in. Like we need to have someone who can go do distribution checks and meters and locates and run the plans. It shouldn't be one person for each task because that's just not realistic. And so the plan is to train Brittany and Andrew in everything and then start to kind of figure out like what paths are they most interested in? And then we'll try to, we'll have them focus on those exams. We're a part of the Colorado Rural Water Association. They're willing to come up and do approximately 40-hour training on wastewater for the team. So we're tapping into a lot of other resources to get them trained so that they can go take these exams, because the first one they could do is distributions after being with us for 30 days.
Okay.
So you can move relatively quickly. It's the, the Bs and the fours, those are the things that take a long time.
So you know more, much more about utilities than you ever thought?
Crash course in utilities over here.
That's great.
Yes.
And board should know that Miranda got our utility or water bills out today, so watch for those yellow cards.
Yeah, so we are down, and I put this in my staff report last month, Kat McDonald had also resigned. Her intention was always to resign, so it was not a surprise. We knew it was coming. I am overseeing billing for now because I don't feel like I can train someone unless Rita and I understand the fundamentals of billing. So she and I are really tag teaming it. But we're happy to report, we got the utility bills done today, so everyone's getting one. So it went out.
So will you, will you be filling that position, Kat McDonald's?
Yeah, so approximately, Rita and I think it will take probably six weeks to have a general idea enough to that we could train someone feasibly. Kat made us an incredible standard operating procedure. I'm really thankful to her for that. We do, you know, again, that may be an opportunity for an operator. I've also learned that a successful biller needs to understand how these operators function because there's a lot of crossover. So we may see an opportunity where an operator could come and cross-train in billing and potentially handle support in both capacities.
That's great. Other questions? Okay, then we have a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Call the vote?
Mayor Potem Mahold?
Yes.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yes.
Trustee Blake Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismail?
Yes.
Trustee Corvelan?
Yes.
All right, good. Well, we're making tracks.
Thank you, thank you to Kat McDonald for all of her, her work. She's, she's very sharp and noticed something on my bill once that led us to discovering a leak in our house that we would not have found without her.
Wow.
Yeah, she, she helped me with my, uh, my citywide bank was like, like bouncing all of my bill pay checks. And she, she, she caught them. So she worked very closely with me on getting, getting that to work.
Yeah, she definitely left us in a good place and I hope, Rita and I are hoping together we can keep us moving forward. We did only unfortunately get a week of training with her. But again, her standard operating procedure is incredible, guided us through the process. So now, once we, now that we have the bills out, we're able to focus more on these meter issues. Something that's really unique that I'll share is there are 107 meters that don't read. And so it's really a big important thing for us to start to figure out how to work with plumbers, work with our team and go out to citizens' homes and figure out what the issue is with these meters. Because what happens is a bill ends up getting estimated. And of course, we feel confident that our estimate is close, but it, we could be over, we could be under. You don't really know until you get the actual read. And so we, those residents will start to receive emails and communication from me to set up a time in which our team can go out and look at their meters. And we do ask that people comply. It's in their benefit to have their meters actually read instead of an estimate. So that's something, I know the utilities team, it was important to them. And I think in the opportunity to cross-train everyone and everything, we'd have a lot more people who could go out and look at meters and identify what the issue is of why these aren't actually reading.
Under seven.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
It's a lot. Yeah, and so it's kind of like one at a time. And we have more eager owners than others who really want to address their issues as soon as they happen. Others maybe less so. And so we'd like, we're going to seek compliance to address these meter issues so that we're actually processing actual reads every month in which a bill goes out.
Great. Okay, so we put consent agenda to bed and we move on to public comment on non-agenda items. Who do we have this evening? Miranda with her hand up.
I think no one with their hand up. And I believe, so Chris Larson and Christopher Kelly are the only two if they're interested.
Great. Chris or Chris, anything to say or ask?
This is Christopher Larson here, Netherlands resident. I just want to, you know, echo what people have been saying about Kat. Incredible work over all the years. She, like, like I heard from Karen, she saved us from a leaking power, or it's Eric, she saved us from a leaking pipe as well. And just really appreciate all the years of service she gave to the town.
Thank you, Chris. Curious, Miranda, where, where's Kat going?
So Kat lives in Drake. And so Kat used to drive in, we were able to help her become remote in this last year, but she used to drive in every day. So she got a job in Estes Park. She was actually working at a bakery and doing a different course of life. But the commute, so Kat drove round trip 110 miles a day to get to and from work when she came in every day.
We were lucky.
Yeah, we were very lucky and we were able to get her to remote, which was wonderful. But that, that commute was big and honestly, the fires, the, be having to be evacuated, Kat was evacuated last year and that was enough. That's how we knew her end was coming.
Yeah.
Because that was enough to worry, like if she was here, how was she going to successfully get home and get her animals? And it just felt too far for her. So now she, her commute's like 25 minutes and she's loving it.
Well, I'll check out the bakery.
Yeah. I'm not sure what bakery, so you'll just have to hop from bakery to bakery.
The, Chris Kelly, did you want to say anything? Hearing none. I, I was expecting to hear some, some noise complaints tonight from neighbors. Do we want to discuss that at all? I went out and bought, by the way, a decibel meter today.
Oh, interesting. You could do it under other business if you want to do.
Okay.
We could definitely.
Fair enough. Is there anything, any other public comments on non-agenda items before we close out Section Hearing none, we can move on, I guess, to discussion items.
All right. So tonight before you is a presentation from US Solar and I'm going to just do a quick overview and then turn it over to Jillian here, who will do the actual presentation. But members of the Sustainability Advisory Board and town staff attended the Clean Energy Solutions Summit in May. And our focus was on solar garden. We've been looking for a long time, even when Garrett McDaniel's was the Sustainability Coordinator, about solar garden opportunities in Netherlands. And just always kind of fell short because of the, the structure of the available parcels and just they weren't quite matching what we needed. So that was our problem that we came to the summit with. And in, in talking with different solar developers, there was a discussion about looking outside of town for larger arrays and, and, and working with developers like US Solar to see what kind of projects they have. And so they have a variety of proposals that they'll share with you tonight. And ultimately, the question really before you is, are you interested in this? Are you interested in what US Solar is presenting to you? If so, which of their proposals are you most interested in? And then it's really important to note that you could open this up for bids and see what other solar providers have to offer as well, or you could choose to go just solely with US Solar. This is a discussion item, so not, so just kind of giving us guidance on where you'd like to go. And then we'll bring it back for further action at a later time. But Jillian, I'll turn it over to you and you should be able to share a screen or I can share your presentation.
Awesome. Can you all hear me?
We do.
Awesome. Okay, I will go ahead and share my screen, but yes, you should also have the presentation that I sent over. Okay, can you guys all see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for that introduction. That was a, a great overview. I'll kind of leave it here on this non-presentation mode. That way I can click back and forth. But, um, that was really a great overview of, of the conversations that we've been having with your town. And we have learned a lot from you all and about the different challenges that your town has had with this amazing commitment that you have all made to renewable energy, but being in a bit more of a topographic challenge, being more in a mountain area and trying to find the, the right solution to get you to those goals. And so our hope is that maybe a combination of one or all three of kind of our ideas or our proposals here might be able to, to get you on the right path and we would love to work with you. So just do a quick introduction to US Solar. So we are a national community solar developer and distributed generation developer, but community solar really is our, our bread and butter. We were founded in 2014, actually in Minneapolis, Minnesota, which now has the largest community solar program in the country. And we have over 55 megawatts of community solar in development in Colorado as of now. And we also are developing projects in Illinois, Maine, New Mexico, New York, and pretty much any other community solar market that, that is growing here in the country. And we are excited to really make our splash in Colorado. And something that really sets us apart is that we are a developer, owner and operator of all of our projects. So many community solar gardens are developed by a community solar developer and then they're sold off to a different company that manages that garden long-term. US Solar intends to be the long-term owner and operator of all of the gardens that we develop. So we hope to be the people that you talk to 10 years down the line. And we take special care in the development of our projects because we're the ones that are ultimately going to have to deal with them moving forward. So that's something that really sets us apart from other developers in the space. Just to list a few of our partners. Locally, we've been working very closely with Energy Outreach Colorado, a local nonprofit organization in Colorado to reach many of our low to moderate income partners. But really, our subscribers or the people who oft take the community solar energy range from large multinational corporations such as Wells Fargo, Walmart, Walmart's largest competitor, who unfortunately I can't name because we can't press them, but City of Minneapolis, University of Minnesota, all the way down to residential subscriptions, which is a big part of what we're going to be talking to about today. We have a robust residential program with over, I believe, 2,000 active subscribers as of today. And so we kind of run the gamut of, of subscribers of all sizes. Any questions about US Solar before I kind of get into the basics of community solar and, and our proposals that we have for you? Okay.
Something Karen?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure this is the right time to ask it, but...
No problem.
Who are your competitors?
Yeah, so some of the local competitors in the Colorado space would be Pivot Energy. Namaste is another one. The interesting thing about the Colorado community solar market is that this program is run on an RFP. So I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit later, in that the capacity is awarded annually and it's a competitive bid. So the, the competitors kind of range because there's not always capacity available from every developer that's located there because they might not have won projects in the last RFP. And so I know US Solar has been extremely successful in the last two, the 2020 and the 2021 RFPs. And I would say Pivot is the first one that comes to mind as, as I believe they have also been awarded capacity. awarded capacity but those are the two that comes to mind and locally in Colorado.
Is that an RFP with XL Energy?
Correct.
Okay thanks.
And then as again like Karen said this may be a little early to ask but
No problem.
How are you doing with supply chain issues are you getting the panels you need and is that getting any better with time?
Yes good question so definitely if you would have asked me that question a few months ago I would have had a hard time answering but now with the executive order putting that kind of pause on the solar panel tariff investigation we're feeling very confident in our ability to source panels and we are very confident with the partners that we work with these Colorado projects in comparison to the rest of our portfolios are really being prioritized so some of the projects that we will be talking to you about today we expect to be online in early 2023 and we are pretty pretty confident that the supply chain is not going to be an issue in moving those forward because these are the projects in comparison to our other markets like Illinois and Minnesota that we are prioritizing and moving forward on that timeline.
Beautiful okay.
Yeah happy to give you more information about the supply chain I'll be honest I'm not the one that signs the the purchase orders but I do know that I think as of last week we were expected to be finalizing our purchase order for the modules for these 2023 build projects so very much moving forward.
Okay one this is we won't answer it tonight but one of the things that I'm seeing that a number of my customers are being challenged on is and this is a sourcing issue is making sure that none of these are coming from slave labor areas I know I'm sure you're you're looking at this yourself but if we go down the road we'll want to be assured of that okay.
Yes absolutely happy to get you in touch with our operations team who does all of our sourcing I'm trying to think of off the top of my head I can't think of which manufacturer we are moving forward with but it's a trusted partner that we've worked with in the past and happy to give you all of that information once even I know it.
Okay your floor.
I will put that on my note to follow up with with probably Erica and get you some more information on that.
Terrific thanks.
Yeah and so kind of starting here with our three proposals as I'll say and I and I want to make it clear that these three proposals are not mutually exclusive so we could do all three of them we could just focus on one but we just kind of wanted to lay them out as as our three options here so the first option is working with the town of Netherlands to share the opportunity to subscribe to our existing community solar projects so these are those 2023 build and expected to be online projects next year we have already been awarded to these projects in the XL 2020 and XL 2021 RFPs so these are projects that have been awarded they are moving forward with in development the first two have already received their interconnection agreements and their permits and so these are projects that are moving forward in the development timeline these projects only have availability at this time for residential subscribers as well as some additional capacity for some agricultural related organizations and low to moderate service in service organizations and that's because as a part of the RFP process and I can dig into that a little bit more when I talk about option number three but part of that RFP process is that US Solar as a part of our bid has to make certain commitments to different subscriber types and so these are the subscriber types that we have available with our projects so what that would really look like is just working with the town of Netherlands to start what we like to call our partner program and this would just work on messaging branding materials and marketing this opportunity to your residents to sign up to a community solar garden that is located offsite and it's really just a financial transaction for these residential customers we would offer a guaranteed savings rate so customers would always be saving it's a no risk agreement and they would just receive bill credits on their XL Energy bill and we would pay US Solar an invoice that's less than the bill credits that they are receiving from XL Energy but they would be supporting renewable energy generation within XL Energy their electric utility that was kind of a little bit of all of the information all at once so I'll stop there and ask if you have any questions about how community solar works in general and then what we foresee as a potential option to sharing this opportunity with your residents.
Hi hi this is Tanya I have a question so you're guaranteeing that it's going to be cheaper than the current rate at XL and a pay if I signed up I would write a check to you guys or to XL?
Yeah good question so I believe the savings rate that we are offering for these projects for our residential customers is a 5% guaranteed savings rate and the bill credit rate from XL Energy is published annually so we know exactly for every kilowatt hour that is produced by the garden that's attributable to the customer's subscription they will receive I think it's seven cents right now so they will receive seven cents per kilowatt hour of a discount on their XL Energy bill US Solar would then charge 5% less than that 7% and you would pay us you would sign a subscription contract with US Solar and receive a separate invoice from US Solar but you would see that discount appearing on their XL Energy bill so.
Why would we still get an XL bill bill that's kind of confusing to get two bills?
Yeah so you're still paying your XL Energy bill as normal and and the production at the garden is based off of the garden's production we size it according to historic usage but you might use 200 kilowatt hours but you receive 150 kilowatt hours produced at the garden for your subscription so it's not a one to one yeah it's not a one to one ratio there may be months where you owe nothing to XL Energy that bill credit is completely offsetting your electric bill and you pay US Solar anytime that that's the case bill credits will roll over and be used up generally in the winter months so it's very common that in the summer you might not have a bill from XL you just have a bill from US Solar but it's just because it's based off of production at the garden not your exact usage that you might still have a bill from XL and I'm happy to show you some example bills of exactly how that financial transaction works.
Yeah I'm sure that'd be helpful later I'm still trying to get understand it just that every resident who signs up gets X amount of kilowatt hours and so if I exceed it then I then pay XL that would be my XL Energy bill would be what I exceed from the like say you said 100 kilowatt.
Yes yeah that's a good way to think about it and it's also the the bill credit rate is not a one to one ratio of how much you are paying XL so it gets a little bit more complicated in that way too so the discount that XL provides you is based off of the net total aggregate retail rate so it's really just the supply portion of your bill that doesn't include transmission and distribution so you might be paying XL 10 cents per kilowatt hour but this bill credit is only seven cents per kilowatt hour and then US Solar is charging you you know six and a half cents so it it's you almost have to think of it independently from how much you are paying XL it's more of a discount you will receive of a value and then you pay US Solar less than that.
Okay I mean where is your farm it's down like I imagine on the front range somewhere?
So we have multiple gardens some of them are located in Weld County I believe that's where the first of these gardens is located and then there's another one in Mesa County and I can pull up and show you exactly the first garden that will be online is our USS Piccadilly Garden and that one is in. But all subscribers just to be super clear just have to be within XL Energy territory so that's kind of why we came to this conclusion about thinking about your town and the challenges that were really presented us is that location and financial you know locating a garden in a mountain range is is really not financially feasible for many and so this is where it provides an opportunity to you know be able to support renewable energy generation on your utility grid it's just not located right next door.
No that makes perfect sense okay thank you I think I'm done for this minute.
And Piccadilly is in Weld County in Greeley Colorado that would be the first of our gardens going online.
I have a question about the cost to the users so do you have like do you know what the average electric bill is for some of the communities that use your solar garden and what sort of discount they see when they are using the garden versus not?
So I can provide a full savings estimate I know that off the top of my head the average savings that customers will see over the year is about $50 so it's not anything massive however it's $50 of savings and supporting your town's renewable energy goals so I I know off the top of my head that on average Colorado customers are using about 8,000 kilowatt hours a year and that's what would equate to that $50 of savings but for every customer that would sign up and I can show you here we do have a custom dashboard that would show the customers all of their savings and their bill credits that they are receiving so as well as before they sign up we provide them with a customized proposal that would show them their estimated savings so we try to make it super transparent very easy for the customer to understand they are receiving this discount from XL Energy and they are paying US Solar this much and I'm saving this much so I'm happy to provide kind of a bill breakdown and and all of that but just to make it clear we do really try to make it super super easy for the customer because it is kind of an odd you know it's just something you're seeing on your bill but once customers get in it and they're able to see those numbers in front of them we find it's customers kind of set it forget it and they're like great I saved some money this month.
And do you do you know what the average electric bill is for your customers?
Off the top of my head so if you remember the electric bill isn't necessarily changing so it's I could show you over the year what a customer would look like but off the top of my head I just don't know that and it would also change very drastically per customer based off of their energy usage so I will put that on my list to send kind of an energy usage breakdown based off of an average 8,000 kilowatt hour month or a year usage amount but off the top of my head I just know that we're looking at about $50 of savings.
$50 of savings for the year for a customer okay.
For a customer.
All right thank you.
What if for those of us that have solar panels already does XL allow us to participate in this program as well?
They do we would want to make sure that we're not over subscribing you and so XL Energy actually allows you to use over you can size your subscription to be over 200% of your historic usage and the nice thing about Colorado XL is if you are getting gas service from XL Energy as well you can absorb the bill credits on your gas bill so we can size you up a little bit but the thing with the bill credits is if you're using more so if you have community solar and onsite solar you're going to be getting a lot of credits if you don't have enough bill to absorb that those will just roll over indefinitely and you'll never realize that value so we try to keep people sized pretty closely so that they're always realizing those bill credits but our residential team has worked with over 2,000 residential subscribers you know many of who who also have onsite so they'd be happy to walk you through that and make sure we're sizing it appropriately.
Great okay terrific should we move on?
Awesome so that's kind of that option one so as I mentioned just as a recap those are existing gardens that we are already moving forward with we are actively subscribing residential customers to these gardens and so we would kind of just wrap in the town of Netherlands set aside specific capacity if you guys would want to have specific capacity set aside to move forward and advertise that to your residents options two and three and let me zoom out here are a little bit more different from from you know just traditional community solar so the second option is that US Solar in our 2021 XL RFP awards made significant capacity donations to direct build low to moderate income residents so these would not be residents who live in affordable housing and the affordable housing unit pays their bills these would be residents who who pay their their electric bills and US Solar will be completely donating our subscription to these customers so that means they will not receive a bill from US Solar they will just receive the bill credits from XL Energy and we are doing this by partnering with Energy Outreach Colorado who works very closely with a number of different energy savings opportunities and programs for low to moderate income residents in Colorado and so through this US Solar is not necessarily actively subscribing these low to moderate income customers we are working primarily through Energy Outreach Colorado so how we would see this working with Energy Outreach Colorado would be that the town of Netherlands and EOC would work together we could do an intro call and explain what we would like to do to ensure that their eligible low to moderate income residents are signed up with Energy Outreach Colorado and that these residents will be enrolled in the donation community solar program so we want to make sure that these customers if they are eligible are getting to these donation subscriptions because that is going to be absolutely massive savings instead of that 5% discount off the bill credit it's 100% donated but EOC we have to work through in order to verify that these customers are low to moderate income customers per the program rules so that is option two any questions about that?
Do you.
Go ahead.
Do you have figures on what percent of our community is LMI?
At this point I do not so that would be we would work with your town and probably with Energy Outreach Colorado there may be a number of residents that are already signed up with Energy Outreach Colorado so they are able to filter down to zip code and to town and so we would work with them but at this time I don't have that information.
Okay.
The timeframe on this again?
Boundaries do we have do you cover like are you going to do all of 8030 or 80466 or are you doing just the town boundaries of Netherlands or what?
Yeah that's that's a good question and we've kind of talked with the Sustainability Board about this or at least members of it specifically Erica and really that is that is up to you so something that we have thought about is not necessarily for this low to moderate income but maybe for our you know the existing capacity that we would be working with residential is that you all have a commitment to renewable energy for your town which doesn't necessarily mean the entire zip code so maybe we would work at targeting your town for three months and and then if we have capacity remaining we would open that up to the zip code or even to Boulder County as a whole so this is something that we can talk with you all about about how specific you want this to be and what would really make the impact on your renewable energy goals.
Tanya sorry to step on you it's your turn.
Oh that's okay they're just two simple questions one was how long would this be for like one year and then maybe get the funding again but maybe not depending or?
Our contracts our residential contracts the we have a signed contract with XL Energy to deliver to their grid for 20 years so our projects will be operating for 20 years and maybe even more after that since those panels are.
Like the free electricity would be.
The low income will be for that full 20 years that capacity is donated for 20 years so it would really be working with the customer so if the customer is in their house for five years and they're signed up they will get that donation for five years but that's where we work closely with Energy Outreach is there's a lot of turnover and they can move customers much more efficiently and and work very closely with them so 20 years of 100% donated subscription.
And what is the income threshold for that?
EOC would do the verification I'm trying to say I can pull that up for you like 80%.
So a person would sign up with Energy Outreach first that'd be the first step?
They would do the verification and and they would make sure that the customer is eligible per the program which is why.
Every year they have to re-show their financials like their tax returns or something?
I am not exactly sure how Energy Outreach Colorado does their verification process I I know every year they have to have them re-sign an XL Energy data consent form because XL requires it annually so maybe at that time they re-verify that but I want to say that it's it's not an annual verification but that would be a good question to ask them about their subscription process and if that's something that you feel like would be a hindrance to your residents just because I don't want to speak for their process.
Okay that's yeah totally fine.
Yeah.
Well that's pretty amazing this program.
Yes we are we are super super excited about this opportunity which is why you know we are really trying to be like we want people to get signed up this is 100% happening and I believe we're looking at about 5,000 subscriptions worth of 100% donations so this is not something small it's something that should be widely available and and we want to make available for your residents.
Okay thank you so much.
And that low income subscriber definition.
I just found it.
Is has a household income at or below 165% of the current federal poverty level. Is has a household income at or below 165% of the current federal poverty level.
Just a little bit higher, well, almost, yeah, one, okay.
Yeah, 60% of the state median.
So that's federal poverty level, not Colorado or Boulder County poverty level?
Yeah.
There's a drastic difference.
Yeah, the definition I'm seeing is actually eligible low income CSG subscriber as of the commission rules is 185% of the current federal poverty level for eligible low income community solar subscribers. So, but I'm happy to, again, that's really, EOC does this verification and they work actually quite really closely with XL Energy. You can see Energy Outreach Colorado's actually logo on most XL Energy bills trying to get customers to sign up through their programs. So I would say that the benefit of them as well is even if they are not eligible for the program rules for the community solar subscription, Energy Outreach does a number of other energy savings programs that they may be eligible for too. So I think this is really a win-win for everyone, getting customers aware of these programs.
And best of all, it's federally funded, the subs?
Correct.
Okay, great.
All right. And then the last option that we've discussed and worked with your team to kind of tweak and narrow down is bidding a custom community solar garden in the upcoming XL Energy 2022 RFP. So this RFP opens in November and project awards are in December. And what that would mean is that, as I mentioned previously, and I have another slide that kind of breaks out everyone who's available in each of these options, is in our existing community solar awards, we do not have any availability for any small businesses or local commercial businesses in the town of Netherland. That's just based off of the commitments that we've made and that the subscribers that we've already signed. We just have availability to those residential subscribers as well as some availability for nonprofits and ag organizations. So the draw for this custom community solar project would be additional capacity in a project that the town of Netherland has really championed, as well as capacity for potential large and small businesses to participate. And so with this, if US Solar would craft a bid, we would find the, you know, the project site. It would be located in XL Energy territory. We would develop that project. We would put this bid through the RFP with the support of the town of Netherland with some help of crafting those different commitments that are required for the RFP. And then if awarded, we would work with the town to do something similar to what we would be doing with our existing community solar gardens. We would reach out to your residential customers, but we would also have availability for a wider array of different entities such as your small businesses.
Terrific, so we could start with option one or two if we wanted and then slide over at some point to option three.
Yeah, absolutely. The only asterisk I will put with that is that the RFP opens in November. So we will continue to go out, you know, my, our development team is already going out and signing sites for this potential RFP. So it's not like I need you to make a decision today, but we would want to know maybe at least a month in advance because we need to craft that, you know, those special commitments and make sure that we're bidding a project that is financeable. So we would just probably want to get that nailed down early fall so that we're ready to go to bid. So that one does involve a little bit more consideration, but again, this project would be financed by US Solar. There would be no upfront capital put forth by the town of Netherland. The benefit would be that you would have this additional ability to advertise to a wider array of different electric customers.
And so only option three would include our businesses?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Other questions? Okay, we can move on?
I do have one, sorry. If, so let's say our town, something significantly changes and we have a lot more demand and we want to increase solar capacity, you know, a significant percentage of our current capacity. Is that something that will be fairly flexible or that will be able to be brought online fairly quickly? Or is that going to take time?
Yeah, good question.
Actually, we do a custom CSG.
So to give a concept of size, so the project sizes are capped at five megawatts of size. And I believe Erica, your sustainability coordinator, let me know that the demand in your town is about 27 megawatts. So we'd be looking at a good chunk, but definitely not reaching all of it. And so when it comes to flexibility, this is where it would be, we have to subscribe these gardens and keep them subscribed. And we generally have them 100% subscribed months before it even comes online. And then we keep that subscribed. So every once in a while, we might have a customer fall out and then we might have some available capacity for you, but it's not like we can expand on that specific garden. That's where you're a little bit trapped in this RFP process. So for comparison, we have over 130 megawatts of community solar online in XL Energy Minnesota, and that program is not capped. So we are just constantly developing, adding more gardens, adding more capacity. And so for example, Walmart is a subscriber to over 36 of our community solar gardens because we just kept adding capacity that they were able to join in. This program is just a little bit more rigid and we're stuck in that RFP. So it might be, we have five megawatts for you awarded in this RFP in 2022 and then maybe 2024 comes around and you're like, hey, I think we want to do this again. We could rebid another project, but we're just a little bit at the mercy of this RFP process.
And can, is, does it look like those projects, you can build a bid on projects each year? Is there an RFP? Like, how does it, how does it actually work?
Every year, there is an RFP. The last two years, 75 megawatts were awarded of capacity. And right now, the XL Energy has filed their res plan, their renewable energy standard plan with the PUC that they have attempted to slash that capacity to 35 megawatts. And as you can imagine, developers are pretty upset about that. So pending everything going to plan, there should be another 75 megawatts or 35 if we don't win. The 75 megawatts awarded here in November and then another 75. So this is a state mandated program. They are required by law to offer this, this capacity. How much capacity, they're kind of trying to cite us on. But it's, it's an RFP that has gone on every single year since the program opened.
Because we do have that 2025 goal for being 100% renewable in town, but at the same time, if town changes, town boundaries would change, if there's new development in the downtown area that requires significantly more electricity, then we would no longer be 100%, even if we did make that target. So I guess kind of understanding what the timeframe is for managing those kinds of transitions, I think is important for us.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I just found the average Colorado XL Energy electric bill for Colorado residents. It's 78.92 per month. So that's close to $1,000 per year and $50 savings would be a 5% savings.
That's what I like to hear. Like I did my math right on that. Yes, yes. And the nice thing about this, this program, as well as I mentioned, that the bill credit rates do change continually. And right now, they are tied to supply. So if the customer's supply rate is going up and that bill credit rate increases to 10 cents, a 5% discount off of 10 cents is larger than a 5% discount off of 7 cents. So, you know, that customer, no matter where bill credit rates go, is protected and is maintaining that savings rate. So it's not an energy hedge. Awesome. So this is just kind of the layout here of breaking out which customers are able to participate in each option so that you can clearly see that, so you've got the existing CSGs. It's mainly residential, but if you have any local nonprofits or agricultural organizations, we'd be happy to work with them as well. Energy Outreach Colorado would be those low to moderate income direct billed customers. And then the custom CSG, we would have to make at least 50% of the garden committed to one of these four groups, which is residential, small, commercial, agricultural or nonprofit. And then the remaining 50% could go to whatever you want. This 50% is a mandate by law. So that's an example of why we would want to have this bid kind of worked out in advance is we would want to know, what does the town think you would want to commit? Would you want to commit all 50% of that to small, commercial, small energy users? And what I've spoken to with Erica is that a majority of your town and the businesses would most likely fall under this, this capacity. So that's a layout of the different availability. And then lastly, I believe someone had asked me, it might have been you, Eric, about timelines. So this kind of lays out here the timelines that we're looking at for the different options. So the existing CSGs, we would work this fall and throughout the winter on kind of our marketing and our, our sharing of this opportunity with your, with your residents. And that first garden is looking to be online in about March of 2023. So early 2023, I have mid to late 2023 just because sometimes things get pushed back with utilities. But as of now, that date that I have is March and we're pretty confident on that. Then looking at our gardens with Energy Outreach Colorado. Energy Outreach Colorado likes to keep the subscription timeline pretty short. So a common timeline from a subscriber standpoint for commercial subscribers, sometimes they'll sign up over a year before the garden comes online. Residential, we try to keep it less than six months. We don't want to have to have them wait too long. And with these low to moderate income customers, we're trying to keep it short just because we don't want people to, you know, be told you're going to be saving a ton of money and, but you have to wait and banking on that. So we, EOC would probably start working with you all later this winter. And then the gardens would come online kind of staggered throughout the next few years. The first ones being online in 2023. And then the custom CSG that's kind of got the longest timeline is we would want to get that bid in this fall and work with you all to craft that. And then the development process would probably go over 2023. So that would include interconnection agreements and permitting. And then we would be looking at a COD date or commercial operation date of mid to late 2024. So that was a lot of information and I'm happy to send those follow-ups on a few things that we have discussed and I've written down. But any questions or anything you'd like me to go over in more detail?
I do have another question. When it comes to the custom CSG, so I guess it's a couple of questions, so.
Yeah, no problem.
Just to help me understand it. So if we were in, if the residents were in an existing CSG, but then we decided to do this custom thing and we decided to submit, you know, a bid for this and we got it, would people then rotate off of the existing one and go into the custom one?
You know, that's a good question. We could do that. Honestly, because the garden is located offsite, I think just knowing that they're participating in a program alongside the town is enough for most, most customers that we've seen. But, you know, if that's really important for the town, we could discuss doing that. But honestly, it would most likely just cause a disruption in service and.
No, I'm more interested in how it has to happen on your end rather than on ours there just, you know, with this limited capacity that seems to exist, so.
Yeah, no, we would probably just keep them in the garden that they're at and continue saving.
And then is the, the custom solar garden process, is that competitive upfront? Like are, are you selecting projects as US Solar that you're going to submit for the RFP? Or is it just any all comers, you'll submit it all and see what you get?
Yeah, so I'll be honest, this is our first time doing this type of custom bid RFP project with, with a town. So generally from US Solar's perspective, we're just picking the best sites that we've got and we're bidding them. There's no limit to the amount that we can do, but it's not like we're shopping around to different towns to see what you guys are going to give us. You know, this is really, from our perspective, if we can go into an RFP knowing that we've got interested subscribers for a garden, that's a win for us. That should be a win for XL with the support that you guys are providing for this project. So we would most likely just pick whichever project that our development team is confident in our ability to interconnect, you know, our ability to permit, it's financially feasible. And then we just add you guys on top as kind of that cherry on top is also, we're working with this amazing town that wants to, wants to participate in the project. So it wouldn't be competitive from, from your end, I guess, if that makes sense. We would just pair you with an already competitive project.
Okay, and that's good to know because, you know, if we're, we're having to put together a proposal to you folks, you know, for whether it's included in this project and then you get turned down, you know, that would be a real shame.
No, you are not selling us on anything. We are already excited to work with you all. And we have done, I should be clear, we have done partner programs in the past. One big one that we've done is with Wells Fargo and working with their employees. So doing, you know, sharing residential subscriptions through towns, that's not something new to us. But this custom bid, we're just excited to have you all saying you're interested in working with us before we even go to bid. And that's a benefit and a win-win, I think.
Great, thank you.
I'm sure you've worked with Erica on modeling what our committee looks like and what our sustainability and GHG goals are. Do we have a break even in terms of number of homes we would need to have enrolled for us to hit our goals? And I address this to either Erica who's on her way in her car right now or to you.
Yeah, I would turn that over to Erica. Really, the, the numbers that I know is that 27 or 28 megawatt amount of demand and that we would be bidding in a project that's five megawatts in this custom CSG. And then we have tons and tons of residential subscription available. That could pretty much cover your whole town. But in terms of how many residents you would need to subscribe, I'll defer to Erica on that.
Yeah, hello everybody. I'm just coming back from the airport, so I'm in my car, so hopefully you can hear me all right. So thanks so much for being here, Gillian, and this is such a great conversation. I'm taking notes to support you all and getting answers with your questions. So we are working to get a more detailed community energy report from XL for the town of Netherland. Right now, we have a 2021 energy report for the zip code. And that was pretty deliberate. I know, Tom, we've talked about this, but you know, our focus has been on the town of Netherland as far as resources with the conversation around energy, but we haven't said no to anyone in the zip code because, you know, obviously, the more people we get to sign up for renewable energy, the greater the impact. And the, the real goal is to transition as fast as we can for everyone, not just the town of Netherland. But it's also important for us to hit our goal for 2025. And so I will have more detailed numbers when we get this community energy report from XL. That will be soon. They told me last, two weeks ago, that it would be two to three weeks, so it should be very soon.
I will say XL has been exceptionally slow at all data requests. Don't be surprised if that gets pushed out. That will be my, my warning.
Thank, thank you, Gillian. I appreciate that forewarning. So yeah, so we do, we're just kind of crunching the numbers back of the napkin math. It's, we're looking at like 300 to 400 homes signing up. And we're going to want to decide, you know, do we just target the town or do we target the zip code? And, you know, I, I kind of go back and forth with that. One of the things I did want to mention is that with the custom solar garden, we've, we've had this conversation for years. So in 2012, 2013, a group of Netherland residents actually bid with this competitive RFP process with XL to develop a community solar garden, and they were not accepted. And they went with another front range town at the time. At the time, the CSG rules were that you had to have the garden within your county or adjacent county. And so now that's changed. We can be anywhere in XL Colorado territory. And so that's going to really help us with that financial piece. So that's something that's like changed the conversation, but it's incredibly competitive. And we've been looking at it for, you know, five, over five years now, plus, you know, the decade now since this 2012 bid that was done. And so one of the things to add is that we do have an anchor subscription. Eldora is interested in partnering with us and being able to be kind of, you know, however big we want to make this commercial subscription for our garden, they are willing to kind of help step in and say, okay, we could do 20%, we can do 40%. For a community solar garden, you can only have one subscriber up to 40% of that garden, but they are able to do that. So, you know, we're looking at 27 million kilowatts. I believe it's kilowatts, not kilowatt hours, it would be kilowatts for our community energy report for the zip code of Netherland. And so that's going to be a much larger footprint. And we're just going to have to figure out the details kind of depending on how you guys want to move forward and how SAP decides to, to really make a campaign and really target. and how SAP decides to really make a campaign and really target goals for these projects.
Yeah, we would probably, if we could get the businesses involved in a custom program and do 300 to 400 homes, I think we'd be hitting a home run.
Erica, since you're on the line there, I have a question about who from the town will be devoting time and effort to this project? Will it be primarily SAP or will it be staff or BOT?
Great question, Karen. So you know, I think that's still to be determined. I definitely see my time going towards the campaign and the marketing and the subscriptions. And you know, SAP is really excited about this project as well, but it has been brought up, you know, maybe having a part-time person that's just focused on getting the word out and doing some targeted campaigns and outreach events and things like that. I think that still can be, can be figured out. I mean, Netherland had an incredible experience with Renewable Connect in 2019. And to the extent that Excel came back and said, what did you guys do? This, how did you get so many folks to sign up for this program? You know, you have so many more people than we have in these much larger communities. What happened? And so I also just have a lot of faith that, you know, we have a lot of really dedicated folks in Netherland. And I think if we have a very strategic campaign and targeted, you know, steps, I think we could be really successful. So there's, I don't think that's yet been determined. I think it really depends on, you know, what options we're excited about and how we want to move forward.
Okay, thanks.
Well, that's really all that I have. I believe the next step, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that really the determination of which of these options, one or all, that you would like to move forward with. And then if it is required, I know it was an open question about if it was required that you all go out to bid for working with a developer for this. And so those were kind of the two open items that I think, you know, and maybe it is, you know, we determine we're moving forward with option one and you all kind of chew on option three for a month and then come back to us. Or, you know, that decision doesn't necessarily have to be made today, but I think getting an idea of what you're all interested in so that we can kind of hit the ground running and working with the appropriate teams to implementing these programs.
Erica, is our process going to be that SAP is going to chew on this and come to the trustees with a recommendation?
So SAP actually already recommended all three, to pursue all three proposals.
To pursue all three? Okay. All righty. So Miranda, then what's our process?
Now you decide. Yeah. So that's SAP's recommendation. Ultimately, it is your choice. You know, again, those two questions really are, are you interested in working with US Solar? I think that's something you need to decide. Or if you want to open this up to bid. And then if it is working with US Solar, which of the proposals are you interested in? Because it is a discussion item. We really just need, the discussion you have will give staff and working with Erica and Gillian the direction on how we move forward.
Okay. And I open it up to the board. This is a great time to ask any additional questions. We peppered, I lost count at 40.
I have a question.
Good.
Regarding one and three. So one is residential and it could happen as soon as possible, like pretty quickly, correct?
Yes, one is residential and we could start subscribing customers now. The garden won't be online until early 2023. So they won't start seeing those bill credit rates. We do provide pretty much monthly communication with subscribers to make sure that they're aware. So once they're in, they'll kind of have maybe a little bit of wait time. But yes, that would be residential and the soonest option.
And then three, the biggest difference is that you can add commercial businesses to this.
Correct. And it could just be a project that the town could also, in your sustainability goals and advertises a project that's really moving forward because you all worked with us to do that. So kind of from a buzzword in the space is additionality, you could seek about, you know, the town really was a champion for this specific project. If that has any value to you all and to your sustainability reporting.
So if we do start with one and then we get all these people signing up and then we do the custom that has to have like, I forgot, like 40% has to be residential or something like that, would those just be included from what we signed up with in number one? Or do we have to find 40% more people to sign up?
Good question. It would be 40% more. And this again is where, you know, if we kind of reach the, you know, the end of interested people in your town, we've tapped out. You know, any XL energy customer can participate in these projects. So maybe that's where we start to peer out. We started with the town and we've tapped out. Everyone who's interested has subscribed. Then we moved to the zip code. Then we moved to Boulder County and we work with them to really promote it. So it's not a concern to us about filling it. It would just be, it might, we might have to branch out a little bit more.
Okay. Because I could see that the first round of people would be the ones that are motivated. And so with the two bills, that always bothers me because I have a hard time remembering to pay bills. I assume you have like automatic deposit, whatever, the opposite of deposit, withdrawal?
Yes.
That people can do it pretty easily.
Yes, we do. We do ACH billing and auto billing and our residential team is well equipped to get people signed up for that.
Okay, awesome. Well, thank you so much.
Yeah. And I'll also add with the residential program, it's kind of maybe in place, but I'll just make it clear is there's no fee to cancel as well. So that's, it's a 20-year program, but there's no fee to cancel for residential customers. So I think we only ask for like 30 days or 60 days notice, just so that we can find a replacement. But it's free to exit as well. So free savings, free to exit.
Yeah, it's pretty easy then. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So in terms of the overall agreement here, then that would be made with the town, we'll be signing some kind of exclusivity agreement with you all. And then, you know, if that were the case, obviously we couldn't really extend that to outside of town boundaries, right? It would only be within town boundaries that any kind of exclusivity could be enforced in that regard.
Yeah. Good question. So the understanding that I have is that we would not sign anything like that. The only thing that we may put in place with the town is just the simple MOU or memorandum of understanding, just so that the town and US Solar are on the same page about what responsibilities we have and what responsibilities the town has. And we have that mutual understanding document. But it is my understanding, we wouldn't sign any exclusivity deal with you all. It's, we have no reason not to want to work with you all to get your subscribers signed up. If we don't do it with you, we're going to go do it with someone else and you're all willing to work with us. And so from our perspective, we can commit to that capacity and we wouldn't have any reason not to. But happy to explore if there's something more concrete that you would like to put in place. But we really thought of potentially just a simple MOU.
Okay. So no contract, really just an MOU, no guaranteed revenue for you all out of the entire project. We wouldn't be liable for any potential losses or anything like that and no exclusivity agreement either. So it seems to me that the idea of going to bid with other companies doesn't really make any sense because there's no exclusivity anyway. So we could work with other companies to get solar as well, I guess.
Yes.
Fundamentally. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think from our perspective, the only thing we would lose is time. So we would want to work with you all to make sure that we're getting this stuff in place. If you want capacity committed, you know, we would work with you all to maybe do that in a little earlier timeline than we would normally do. So that if we don't fill it, we have time to go fill it somewhere else.
Makes sense.
Great.
Thank you.
Is Erica still available?
I think she's still on.
So I have a question for Erica if she is still.
I am here. Yes.
Oh, great. Okay. Erica, did you take a look at Pivot Energy and Namaste to see if they could meet our needs for the solar garden?
Yeah, great question, Karen. So Pivot, I have not been able to get in touch with and Namaste, I got a call back a couple of weeks after I initially reached out. So I still need to connect with them. They are two on the list of, I don't know, six, eight, 10 solar gardens that are on Excel's website as options for community solar garden subscriptions. I've reached out to over half of those or I've been able to connect with over half of those. I've reached out to all of them and haven't had much luck. So there are some other community solar gardens out there. I know Sunshare has some subscriptions available. They do not do the 5% guaranteed based on the changing bill credit. They do just a flat kind of same fee, which, you know, is still a good option, but it's, you don't have that cost savings. And then there also was just a few other kind of few and far between subscriptions with a couple others. I can look back at that Excel document that I created. But I still need to connect with Namaste and Pivot. Karen, I think there was, they had switched with another company. There's been a couple of shuffles as far as people on the Excel list and kind of who's actually managing their gardens now. So I can look back and follow up with that with you.
How are you feeling and how is SAP feeling about considering other companies that could provide the solar garden for us?
Yeah, I think my feeling is that we have this great opportunity to work with US Solar. I've been really impressed with all of our communications with Gillian and her team thus far. I would not be opposed to working with another developer. But I also feel like this is something that we've been trying to pursue for over a decade now for Netherland. And I am very concerned. I feel like we need to approach all three of these options simultaneously because the bid, the bidding process with Excel for community solar guards is so competitive. It's, it is, there's lots of communities like Netherland. I know Golden put out an RFP for a garden just recently. And, you know, so we're going to be competing against these neighboring communities for this bidding process. Hopefully it is 75 megawatts. We'll find out soon enough. And so I, my, my idea at this point is like, let's work with US Solar. If another opportunity presents itself, you know, maybe this bid, obviously we wouldn't want to do that to Gillian. We'd want to be transparent. But maybe even just like in future bidding, depending on what happens with November's bid this year. Does that help answer your question? And as far as SAP, I think SAP is feeling similar based on the conversations that I've had. I don't think anyone is saying we have to work just with US Solar. I think it's more of this like, we have this great opportunity to work with this great team. No other teams have really presented themselves. You know, I've had conversations with Sunshare and I haven't had the same opportunities with even just the gumption of like, yes, we would love to do this. Like, we'd love to partner with you guys if this is something that you'd like. And we'll try to make the most competitive bid we can for this November cycle.
Great. To answer your question, Karen, I know the folks over at Pivot pretty well. And I think just from, and I know US Solar and I know Namaste, I always think if you can't get their attention during the hardship, it's not going to be better much later. I think Gillian's bent or backwards to work with Erica to make, to put together a program that's really compelling. But if I'm having a hard time connecting with somebody, it's not going to work very well later.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'd like to hear from the rest of the SAP members that are online. I think I saw Chris and Alan, if they have anything to add before we wrap up things. Or maybe we need to hear from some of the other board members too.
Do you want to just call for a full public comment?
One more question before we do. Is there, putting on the, stepping over to the other side of the street, is there any reason, Gillian, that somebody wouldn't do this? What types of objections have you heard and why would somebody not say 5%?
Good question. The potential, and I'll be 100% honest. So I work, for the last three years, I was on our commercial team. So when I think of the sales process, I come a little bit more from the commercial side. And so from a residential standpoint, thinking about why customers don't do this. They, you know, US Solar is an outside company. They've never heard of us. And so when we think about partnering again, why we jump up and down about this opportunity is you guys are helping us get the word out and you're a reputable town that people trust you. Versus, you know, a lot of people are wary of someone coming around and saying, hey, just sign up and you save money. So I think there's general skepticism, not supporting renewable energy. And then the only other thing is actually going back to your previous question and maybe more from the commercial side of things is that, you know, they don't want to lock up the opportunity to do something else. With residential, that's a little bit easier because we have the cancel at any time, so for free. But from a commercial standpoint, that's maybe sometimes where I hear a lot of pushback is, oh, well, what if in five years we want to put an onsite system, but we've already locked into this contract? So those are my general things, but our residential team, I'd be honest, would probably have that actual customer feedback for you.
Great. Anything else, Karen? Then are there other SAP members on tonight that Alan or anybody else?
Yeah, Christopher Larson has his hand up.
Okay, thank you. Christopher Larson.
Guys, and you know, thank you, Gillian, for giving this presentation yet again. We've heard this several times now. I'm really glad to hear the conversation tonight and really to hear that there's no real question about going for option two. The Energy Outreach Colorado is kind of a no-brainer. You know, doing that step is an opportunity to get the people who need it most the help they need it. So I'm glad to hear that that wasn't really discussed. Like Erica said, the SAP board and our discussions, we're really in favor of going for all three of these. And it's really because of those pieces. Obviously, option two, no-brainer. Option one is the chance to start doing something now. It really puts the onus on SAP and on the town to get the word out to residential customers that, hey, we can be saving money. We can be moving towards our goals, doing the right thing, and it can happen as soon as next spring. That people can start saving money with the new thing. The custom CSG is really the piece of, obviously, that's all the big part of the discussion. And it is the part that can really help our commercial district. You know, that's why we really came down to doing all three. The question that'll come to the board and really needs to be worked out between now and November is this idea of an anchor. As you heard Erica say, you know, we've had, we've been approached by Eldora about serving as up to a 40% anchor from that custom solar garden. Whether that leaves enough room for the businesses here in town is a question. Whether that's, you know, it might still be the right choice to go with 40%, and that's something that just needs to be worked out. But we've, the discussion within SAP really kept coming around to all three of these fill a different need within our goals and we need to do all three of them simultaneously.
Yeah, this is one of the closest, or this is a really good fit to get us to our 2025 goal quickly. It's a really good match.
And really, if, you know, that 2025 goal, you know, I take a lot of ownership for pushing the rapid goal on that one. And the fact that we got distracted by COVID for a couple of years. Honestly, I mean, if we don't start really pushing first the residential signup starting this fall, the energy outreach as soon as possible, and then pursuing this custom solar garden, it really is going to make it almost impossible to make that 25 deadline. Even with all three of those, it's going to be a stretch. It's going to be a hard haul and take a lot of work on our part to get people to sign up. But this is really the best option we've seen for making significant progress in the next three years.
Cool. And we've got, we've got, we need 300 to 400 homes out of 715 homes. Okay, Jonathan.
I really have no comments besides that it does seem like a no-brainer here, especially after the option number two. I guess I have a little bit of concern with the amount of work that's going to go into the RFP process. So I'd like before November to have a better idea from town staff as well as SAP, who that onus is going to be on. No, definitely not. And I think, yeah, like you said, this is no-brainer. There's no need to go out for an RFP to bid. I think US Solar has provided us with excellent opportunity, excellent information. I think US Solar has provided us with excellent opportunity, excellent information. So I'm all in favor, all three.
Then I guess our next steps, um, are spelled out on slide 72. Or I guess it's, uh, yeah, 72 of 173. Decide, uh, which, if, if not all options, the town wants to pursue. Then, uh, direct, uh, the town to put an MOU in place. Uh, US Solar to provide bid options and examples and Netherlands to determine marketing strategy.
I had a couple of other discussion points, uh, Mayor Protem, if I could bring those up just, just quickly for the board, and that is, uh, one, one being, you know, that I didn't, not that this means, it doesn't mean everything, right? But it seems that, uh, you know, Namaste and Pivot are both, uh, they're both companies that are certified B Corps, which are, you know, generally values that I'm, that I'm pretty interested in. And I didn't see that, uh, US Solar was a certified B Corp. And that, that was just one thing that, uh, made me think it would be interesting to also pursue. I'm not saying we shouldn't do, uh, work with US Solar, but rather that, um, it, it seems to me we should continue to pursue uh, other options as well. See what kind of, uh, services might be offered. And then the other maybe more direct question I had for Jillian, and Jillian, I don't know if this is, you know, within your sort of purview at, at, at the company, but, um, you know, one of the biggest issues that often comes up with these sorts of things, and Karen touched on it earlier, was, uh, uh, you know, with, with having to manage two bills and having a high volume of maybe customer requests for bill analyses and things like that. And, you know, I think that that is a struggle, struggle for, for most energy providers. But, um, you know, before, before this meeting, I did, uh, take a look at Better Business Bureau. And while there were many like rapid and excellent responses from US Solar, there was also a form of concern about, uh, capacity to take on, uh, billing analyses. So I'm just wondering if you had a response to sort of that situation and whether or not, uh, you guys have, uh, the capacity to serve. I guess when I'm thinking about the residents of the town, right? And sort of that we, that we would be, uh, recommending you to them. And we need to make sure that when we do that, uh, and they call somebody, somebody actually answers. And there's somebody there to help them through the process because it is, it can be confusing.
Yes, absolutely. So I will answer that in a, in a few different ways, but definitely with the caveat that I am not on the residential team. Um, I do work very closely with our director of our residential program, Spencer Albert, who is wonderful and has been very actively for the past few months, really working on and improving our systems to make sure that that whole subscriber process has been streamlined. So I would say over the last six months, there has been significant changes to our residential process as well as onboarding of a specific customer service representative, someone who is, job is entirely dedicated just to answering customer responses. We had that in the past, but she also did a lot of different things. So now we have a whole customer service team with a specific representative. Um, and so we have definitely amped up. I will say when I started three years ago at US Solar, our origination team was my boss, Erica Fordsman and myself, um, as well as a residential director, and it was the three of us running pretty much everything. Uh, our residential team now has, I believe, nine people on that entire team just dedicated to our residential program. Um, and so thinking about the expansion over the last year has, has really ramped up. So depending on the timeline of those comments, I don't want to speak, you know, too broadly, but there's a chance that honestly, you know, yeah, I will admit that we have made significant improvement over the last year with the understanding that the amount of people that we are going to onboard is, is a lot. Um, as well as we have made significant investment in our, uh, online dashboard and our online signup programs that are continually improving because we know that those are, are key to the customer process. So, um, happy to get you in contact directly with Spencer. Before you make that decision, I would love for him to do a demo for you of the signup process and what that looks like. If you think that that would make a, uh, you know, give you that ease of mind, um, he's done that in the past. So, um, that would be my statement to that.
Thanks, Jillian. Yeah, just to my other, uh, BOT members, that that is, that's just one thing I want us to consider here is that if we are, you know, recommending a particular company, uh, to, for a residence that, you know, we have some idea of, of maybe the, the process that that company uses for, especially addressing complaints and things like that. And that we, you know, feel, you know, comfortable with, like what they're offering is obviously amazing. The numbers look great. It seems like a great opportunity. I want to do all three, but I also want to make sure that it's, that it's real, that it's legit. And that, uh, if things do go wrong and things don't come out the way, uh, that was described in this presentation, that there is adequate recourse for our residents.
I a hundred percent respect that. I think that's really smart, um, speaking from a, you know, solar perspective and that there are bad actors in this industry. Um, US Solar is not one of them, speaking as a US Solar employee. But I would absolutely love to offer that opportunity to have Spencer and the residential team walk you through that process. If that would give you a little bit more of a peace of mind.
I do feel like it would be, um, due diligence on our part to, to make sure we understand the whole process before we recommend it to our residents.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, thanks for making that point, Eric, about the, um, help understanding your bill. When I, um, started, when, after I installed, so had solar panels installed and started using them. The bill is, is confusing, um, from Excel. And so, so it, it, it takes a while to understand. And, um, yeah, I think having a good, um, customer support, um, is important.
Absolutely. Well, that, I can add that to my list of, of follow-ups after this call is, is getting, um, connected with, with Spencer and the residential team and our customer service team.
That's great. And Erica's in the canyon now, I'm just, I'm told, so she's off. Uh, and so she'll probably be coming back to you this week to talk, uh, talk about next steps.
Absolutely.
Thanks a bunch, Jillian.
I have one more question. Oh, just there. Uh, so this is, you're connected to the grid with this. If you are having technical problems on your end, it won't affect me here at home because it's just the grid's working its thing.
Yep.
Obviously, Excel has problems, that's, it's going to affect me like normal, but nothing's going to change for, for, from my perspective, sitting at home, if things.
Nope, the energy, your end. The energy to your building will continue to be delivered as usual. The only difference is that if our garden is not producing, you won't receive credits.
Right.
Um, but then we're also not getting paid. So we have just as much of an incentive to keep those gardens online and get you those savings. So, um, that's kind of where that long-term owner-operator piece really comes in is when we're developing these projects, we use top-tier equipment. And we're developing these projects to be well-run and well-developed because we have to deal with them for, for 20 years. So, um, we work hard to keep those projects online and, and delivering, but the electricity, no change.
Great, that's good to know. I know that people might be worried about that, so I just wanted to know the answer.
Yes, no, absolutely. It is, like I said, that's why I kind of presented it like, it's really a financial transaction, but the energy is flowing. Everyone in Colorado is being powered by solar in some sense because it's on the grid, but not in your building.
Gotcha. Great, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. So next step from my end, just if I'm clear, is I'll just plan to follow up with, with Erica on our next steps, is, is that team?
Yep. Thanks for, thanks for doing this.
Yes, thank you so much for your time. And I know we talked for a long time. So if you have any questions that come up, happy to, to answer that. And I will plan to follow up on the different items that, um, I noted to get you some more specific detail and, and get you connected directly with our residential team.
And Spencer leads that team?
Yeah, Spencer Albert, um, he comes from a marketing background. So he really is our residential and customer experience director, I believe is his whole title. So his whole role, he was hired about a year ago, and his whole role has really been transforming this, this whole process. Um, and so I'm very confident in his ability to really get that user experience and that customer service experience up to par with the amount of customers that we are about to onboard. So it's something we are aware of and, and are very actively working to be prepared for.
Thanks a bunch.
Yeah, well, have a great night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jillian.
Bye.
That was our, um, that was, uh, the public comment i- is, is open at this point, right?
I think you already did it and one member of the public, Chris Larson spoke.
Right, okay. Then, uh, what's our, where do we, do we have anything else that we want to deliberate on, uh, as a group with just us? No, no, uh, still on, uh, solar garden. What are our initial thoughts and, and where do we think we're headed? Uh, this isn't an action item, but where, where are we each at?
You know, I, I, um, uh, Sab has spent the most time on this. And so, um, I have to, you know, just, uh, support what their recommendations are. You know, I'd, I'd like to go with a more local company like Namaste. I'm not sure if the other one is local pivot energy, um, but they, they do have a Boulder office. Um, however, they're, like you said, if they're not responsive, then that's not a good sign.
Definitely not a good sign.
You know, it means they're not interested. It means that, um, they, they won't be responsive to our customers. They, you know, so, so I'm, I'm great with going with, uh, uh, US Solar and pursuing all three of the options, um, as long as we have the capacity to do that.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's the big F. Jonathan?
Um, yeah, I can understand the desire to work with Pivot or Namaste. I believe that that is still completely open, even if we go in this. And I would like to kind of comment to Trustee Combs Ismail's questions and comments while that is very astute. And I would not see this partnership, uh, with US Solar as us, um, recommending anything to anyone, merely providing an opportunity that citizens could then choose of their own volition to participate in.
Tonya?
Uh, yeah, I agree with what Jonathan said and Karen. So definitely feel like, especially option two, it would be silly not to pursue that. So let's just go for all three. Sounds good, what Sab wants, and we'll let them kind of work it out.
Tonya, I always like calling on you because I can see what's going on outside.
Yeah, it's still sunny out. Well, I mean, sunny, there's still light out.
Yep, that's cool. Eric?
Yeah, I guess, um, I also like the idea of going local. Also, if local doesn't want to go with us, then what can we do about that? I wonder if, uh, if some of the local, more, more local, uh, solar businesses have the same deal for loan meaning income. I'm not enough of an expert on this to know whether or not they, they have done a similar thing as, as US or as here, and we just don't know about it, um, that we have the option to sign up with. But like Jonathan said, we don't, we're not committing anything really. We're signing an MOU that, uh, that does commit us to advertising on their behalf. That is at least what the presentation suggested, uh, that we would essentially be doing some marketing work uh, as a town for US Solar, uh, in exchange for this, uh, kind of offering that they're giving our residents. So, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable enough with it, I think. But I do, I do kind of want to see, uh, what that process is like before, uh, we make any huge commitments. But I think, I actually, I think we should do all three.
Yep, and I think what I heard Jillian say, uh, more than once is that she's not the residential expert. She's a commercial person. And I'd like to hear from Spencer about, because in the end, he's going to have to help us implement. And these are pretty ambitious goals. If we're going to sign up this, this many homes to hit our goals, uh, we need to know, uh, what the process is like and start to know our metrics pretty well at our hit rate.
Or at least know what it should be like so that if we're dedicating staff time to, uh, promoting US Solar, uh, at any point, we can pull that time if it's not working out the way that we, uh, imagined it would.
Indeed. Okay, so what do we, do we need to do anything more tonight?
I think we have direction and so we'll take it back to Sab and continue to work with Jillian on next steps and keep the board appraised of that, probably likely through Erica's staff reports. And then the MOU will eventually have to come back to you for approval and signature as well.
And it's the liaison, um, I'll know first.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Good. Okay, do we have other business tonight?
Well, Tom, it sounded like you had noise on your, uh, other business agenda, so I'll, I'll let you have at it because I was going to bring it up myself.
Okay, good. I got plenty of, uh, feedback over the weekend. Doesn't bother me, I'm across the street and I really enjoyed the music. And I, I love the concept of celebrations, but, um, we had a 105 decibel limit. I know that, uh, from having gone up into, you know, along Sixth and up Navajo Ridge, that, uh, there were pockets that, that just reverberate differently. I know that, um, we, we had music at the farmer's market the day before, and I'm wondering if some of it's just being conflated, I don't know. But, um, you know, I think that essentially, you know, if we're going to say 105 decibels on a permit, we have to have the ability to test it and make sure it's compliant. People will expect that of us if we're going to issue these kind of permits, that they're complying. Um, I thought the, you know, there's, if there's a third anniversary, there will be a fourth anniversary. And so I just think we should, you know, as we get closer, we should think about it. But you, you had a point of view, Eric, and you probably heard some of it too.
Yeah, I did hear, uh, a, a bit. Not, well, I didn't hear the actual music myself, but I heard from residents a bit. And, you know, it's one of those things where I, you know, I, I don't have a, a decibel mirror in my ears. Uh, I can't, uh, and neither, neither do, uh, most, most residents for that matter. So it's kind of a question of, you know, people saying that they can hear things does not necessarily mean that it is too loud, right? Like being able to hear it is not in and of itself, uh, some kind of a violation of, of town code. But at the same time, uh, I have heard on multiple occasions from town staff, from residents, and also in my own reading of Town Code on Noise, that, uh, that our code is pretty strange and, uh, inadequate when it comes to enforcement. So it seems that along with just about everything else in town, uh, code might obliquely address it, but it's either unenforceable or not written to a standard that, uh, that anybody seems to be okay with. So it might be something, uh, that we need to, uh, clarify and address what exactly, uh, constitutes a violation of noise in all sorts of different respects, uh, not only for music, but also for animals, for instance, which, as I understand it, that part of the code is entirely unenforceable, uh, even though it kind of exists. And, uh, I think that, I'm not saying that we need to ca, uh, make things quieter. Maybe even the contrary, I'm saying that maybe we need a better objective mechanisms for determining what constitutes, uh, a violation of, of any kind of noise ordinance and, uh, give our, give our staff, uh, the power to essentially say, uh, this does not constitute a noise ordinance, uh, but thank you for your complaint, it is noted. Or to say, actually, you're right, this does constitute a noise, uh, a, a noise violation and, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna shut it down. So I feel like we need to be on, on one side or the other there. Right now, we seem to be trying to straddle both and, uh, it feels, uh, ineffective and, uh, kind of toxic, uh, for community relations.
Well, can I just add one thing? And it's, like, the, in the noise ordinance and where we issue variances, we have the ability to potentially deny a variance because of history of complaints. My concern is that the complaints are coming to you as board members and not to staff. So we're blissfully unaware that there are these concerns. And I know Trustee Baumhauer and I have talked about this in the past, if maybe there's, there's a concern about coming to staff, but like how, we won't know how to appropriately address a noise variance if someone doesn't email us the way that one resident did. And so I appreciate that it's coming to you. It's gotta trickle down to the ones who are actually issuing the variances.
Miranda, I have a question about that. Um, how do you track the complaints now?
Yeah, so we have a file for every event. And so those types of emails would get saved into that event holder. And then when we go into the next year's event, we can see how many complaints there were. And that actually did happen with Nada Root historically. You know, these are things we had to talk about, or Caribou Room, we had to talk about, you know, when are we? And I actually stopped issuing noise variances for Caribou Room after a while because of all the complaints. But we are getting them as town staff. So that was one of my concerns about this weekend because I've only heard from the one resident, but I keep hearing that there's more than one, they, they have contacted town, but there's more than one out there.
But I only got like two letters to.
Is it two? Is that, yeah.
Do people get more than that?
Yeah, so I guess there were more than that, and I think that's the hard thing is. Yeah, so I guess there were more than that, and I think that's the hard thing is, we are happy to take a look at them, but they're just not coming to us. I think it has to go down the right channels to the people who also can enforce it in real time. If we're not getting the calls, then we won't notice and not PD. And so I just think holding it within the board doesn't make sense.
I don't like it either.
Fair enough. Also, I mean, if it's once a year, I mean, then I really think people, if it's not over the decibel letter, the number, that we should be measuring these things, I suppose, that's a great idea. But it's not over it, and it's once a year, I feel like, yeah, those people are always going to complain. It's like people always complained about Nedfest, people always complained about parades, they always complain. There's always people who don't want any noise at all. And I get it, you want to sit in your yard and listen to the birds, but maybe once a year, you can't do that. And that's just part of living in a community. But I do think we should, next time this happens, you know, do our police officers have decibel meters? I mean, they probably should if they don't, so that they can just drive by and check it out. And so it's on the record that yes, it was and no, or no, it wasn't.
Yeah, my understanding from former Marshall Johns was that the ones that we had were, were not working. And so I do think that our team needs to get some more. You know, I will speak on behalf of Chief Fineleven, though, we didn't hear anything as town staff. I know I talked to Mayor Protam Mahold, and we talked a little bit about whether they had a variance, but we didn't hear any of those complaints until the emails that we saw after the event was pretty much over.
How many emails?
Just the two, to your point, just the two that came through to the board, although I thought it was the same person.
Yeah.
That's not really that many to trust even. But I am concerned about what Eric, I'm personally not that concerned about this particular event, but I do think we should be measuring. If they did it every weekend, then we would not be, we should not give the variances every weekend. But that's why, it's a special occasion. But we, Eric saying we have no tools for actually enforcing a true noise complaint, be it, you know.
So I think what it is, is the town administrator would evaluate, you can revoke the permit. That's there, that is in the code if a variance was provided. I think the biggest thing, though, is this section of code that talks about if the applicant were to apply again, that we take into consideration the history of noise permits, and then also the applicant's willingness to work with town officials to mitigate future resident complaints. And I think that's big. If we go to Nodder Root, when they go, you know, that example here, next year when they go to apply, we're going to say, well, what's the plan to address these issues? The same way we did with parking them.
But I'm more concerned about, like, say, he's saying that in our code, there really isn't an accurate way to enforce it, say, the noisy party that your neighbor is having or your.
Depends on the type of noise, that's the thing.
Or neighbor's dog that barks incessantly. There's no, there is no recourse, even though it would, think, I would say that's excessive. I can hear it through my house. So how can we remedy this? I feel like it should be, this should not.
No, I think, I think it needs to be because on one hand, you have, you know, again, I'm not saying that I want people to make less noise. I'm just saying that I think that when we tell residents what the rules are, we need to be able to say whether or not someone is following them. And if we are in a situation in our code where somebody makes a complaint and we can't even tell them if that complaint is legitimate or not, like, that's a problem. But we need to be able to say, actually, they are well within the decibel limit, and you really have no standing for your, for your noise complaint. Or we need to be able to say, you are correct, they are over the decibel limit, you know, whatever, whatever the rule is, right? So we need better objective measurements in our code that tell us when, when these things are not working out. And if we do have objective measures in our code, we need to be able to measure them. So if our PD don't have decibel meters.
Yeah, they need them.
We can enforce a 100.
I'll buy them, you know, actually, I take it back, I don't know how much they cost. But, so you said that Fineleven had some ideas for you. I feel like at the last meeting, you were saying that you had gotten some feedback from Fineleven about ways to make it.
The great symbol, and the way that you can maybe more objectively determine whether or not there is a persistent problem. And I think there's some good codes out there that we can rip off that are not invasive and do not allow neighbors to, you know, for instance, retaliate against each other by getting their animals removed from their homes. Like, I think we need to avoid that situation at all costs. But, you know, there are ways to do this. But if we're going to address noise, it seems like we could, we could pretty much address noise, well, holistically. I mean, we should probably talk to the PD more because Marshall Fineleven had a number of concerns with the noise ordinances and where they could be strengthened and improved.
We should invite her for a discussion on this.
So in the spirit of not over talking this tonight and the fact that this is five BOT members and no member of the public listening to this discussion, I would like to suggest that we end this discussion and motion that we bring this back as an agenda item that's publicly posted and not brought up in other business. And I agree, we need to address this noise ordinance, but I don't think we're going to do that tonight. And not having the public be a part of the discussion is a bad idea, so.
Yep, yeah, I'm going to direct anybody that called me to put it in writing to town staff. There's no way, these are, have to be data-driven decisions that respect the, well, the community, but somebody has to put their hand up.
I don't want to bring up.
And so with that, is there other business?
Okay, I was wondering if anybody wanted to.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Tanya, I have other business. I have other business.
Hold on, we won't be able to hear.
Can you guys hear us?
No.
Trustee Cooms Ismail, okay. Mayor Protam Mahold?
No, hold on, could you guys hear us? Tanya has been.
No, we could not, we lost the speaker, we can hear you now.
I just had a quick other business. Well, first, I'm like, okay, so are we bringing this back up as a discussion item? Or do we have two people that want to do that? Because I would agree to that for a future agenda. Not, not the knotted root, no, but the idea of going through our code and making it.
Specifically the noise variance, as Eric was talking about. So these recommendations, bringing Jennifer Fineleven in, bringing in our noise variance, bringing in potentially a noise expert, and yes, starting this as a discussion question.
Yes, I want to do that.
And it can be a part of that.
Perfect. Now, I have other businesses. Anybody have any interest in adding an amendment to the short-term rental resolution to prohibit fire pit, outdoor fire pits in short-term rentals?
No.
I, yeah, I mean, I'd be interested in that. Do you have?
Just a simple, like, in the list of things that they cannot do, they cannot have outdoor fire pits.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to do some research, I have some research.
Bring it up as a discussion, obviously. But if Karen, you'd be my number two, we can maybe put it on a future agenda.
Yeah.
Just one thing to think about that, we discussed that during the STR regulations. And the reason against not doing that was not having the ability to enforce it. So not putting the rules down that we cannot enforce, which is the exact discussion we just had about the noise variance.
Yeah, but if it's not even as a, like, if it's not in there as a no, then you couldn't even enforce it. Like, it could be enforced, a police officer could drive over and say, put out your fire. Or it could be reported to Miranda or whoever does the licensing so that they know that there's a violation at this home and that they're actively promoting fire pits in their advertisements. There's definitely, if you don't have it on there, then you certainly have no recourse. But if it's on there, then you do, you can. I mean, they don't, maybe if they keep having fires at this house, next year, their license doesn't get renewed. You know, I mean, but we can bring this up in a discussion.
I would be willing to discuss it. It was suggested by ARB and B and other folks that those complaints should actually be directed to the ARB and B websites. And those complaints should be posted on the homeowners thing by the neighbors.
Yeah, so we did.
By then, the neighborhood burns down and, you know. Let's just talk about it later.
Well, I was just going to say, so we did have that phone number that you could call, but we got rid of that service because no one called it. So, and really did no difference, you would leave a message and the town clerk would get it. The only concern I do have about complaint base is we still have no proof. And so that's a really slippery slope to have, you know, if I call and I say so-and-so has a fire pit, but we have no proof, then we can't necessarily cite them. I would, I would love if the board would flush that out a little more, the thought behind that. Because enforcement, I do agree with Trustee Baumhauer, it would be very challenging for us. And Police Department, we can't ask them to take this on.
Yeah, Tanya, maybe you could send me some mail with why you have this concern and, you know, some background information. And I'll look at it when I get back from Norway.
Okay.
Three weeks.
What are you, you're leaving this week? Good for you.
I'll second Jonathan's motion to adjourn.
Okay, let's.
That wasn't done.
Okay, Mayor Protam Mahold?
Yes.
Trustee Corverlin?
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismail?
Yes.
Trustee Baumhauer?
Yes.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
So we adjourn at 9:05. Thanks all.
Nice one, guys, thank you.